Good evening, everyone. We're going to begin the work session portion of our formal agenda. Dr. Boone, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you with the on-time graduation presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. A couple of weeks ago, VDOE released the graduation data across the Commonwealth. And we wanted to provide some updated information and a little deeper focus on what we know about our numbers. We did see a shift in what had been an upward trend this year. Talk a little bit about what we know about those data. To be frank with you, we were surprised by the data, and we'll continue to look into it. As you know, Dr. Rogers is already at a conference. Dr. Bailey, Mr. Coleman.
Mr. Price.
Mr. Price, thank you. I drew a blank. I apologize.
No, you're fine.
Mr. Price are going to lead us through, and we know as we are starting this workshop a little bit late, if we try to let us get through the presentation and then we can catalog questions, and you know we can come back with the board and continue the discussion on it. So with that, I'll turn it over to the team.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Boone, and good afternoon, members of the board. With me today are the coaches, as well as Executive Director of our Secondary Schools, John Coleman. I would like to introduce them so that you'll know. Ms. Jackie Ely, who's the coach at Norview High School. Dr. Andrea Callahan, coach at Lake Taylor High School. Ms. Kimberly Singleton, graduation coach at Granby. Ms. Jackie Plude, graduation coach at Booker T. And Mr. Wesley Price, right here at the table, graduation coach at Maury. And so I wanted them to be here today should there be additional questions that you would like to ask. So, moving forward, we know that the on-time graduation piece and the other rates are a part of the school board's accountability plan. And so we wanted to share as much information as we could. And so we did get some requests today that we were able to import that into the report that you have. However, if you have any additional questions, we'll work on that. The information you have before you shows the trend of the first-time ninth graders who graduated in four years, and for the last six years, what our graduation rate has been, and for each school. Unfortunately, we showed a slight decline from the previous year, eighty-five to eighty-one. However, we still show progress from six years ago. The makeup of the cohort, eighty-one percent certainly are graduates, but nine percent were dropouts, a little bit higher than it has been in the last couple of years. Long-term absence, less than a percent. Five percent are still enrolled, and four percent received a GED or Certificate of Completion. One of the requests that we received today is, what does it look like for the number of types of diplomas over time? So what we did was we pulled that information so that you could see the types of diplomas that make up the on-time graduation rate. You have advanced diploma, IB diploma, standard, apply study, which is also special, and modified standard diploma.
You may have to refer to your paper copies even though I've done refreshing it.
Yes, it's not showing up.
It should be coming up, so just so we know.
Okay.
That's all right.
Okay. So, when you look at how many, the percent of students who have advanced diplomas, if you add the two together with IB and advance, indicating advance, we've shown a little bit of progress over the previous year, from thirty-nine to forty percent. And certainly, we have more students achieving a standard diploma. Postgraduate plans, this information is self-reported by students. We do subscribe to the clearinghouse to give us a better picture of it. But for today's presentation, we're just showing you postgraduate plans of where students feel like they are going to be after they graduate. And so we've shown a little bit of progress in the two-year or the number of students that plan to go on to college, whether two-year or four-year. And I think, you know, it's really good to see that from comparing 2012-13 at eleven percent with no plans, down to one percent that do not have plans. Looking at how we, how our rates compare by ethnicity from the previous school year, looking at the cohort from the 2013-14 year, we've declined in most of our ethnicity groups, with the exception of Asian. And so we have two groups, our white and our Asian subgroups that have achieved at least ninety percent or better. As part of the school board's accountability plan is to look at how we compare to the state. And so the division number is in the darker green. The state is in the lighter green. We're trailing the state in most of our categories, with the exception of the Asian category, which we had one hundred percent.
And multiraced.
And multiraced, sorry. Moving on to the other subgroups. Students with a disability, economically disadvantaged, English language learners. The darker bar is Norfolk, and the lighter bar is how we compare to the state.
I think it's important, if I can just insert, when you look at the gap with economically disadvantaged between division and state, you can see some real progress there. We're only five percentage points away from where the state is in terms of the on-time graduation rate of economically disadvantaged students. So that's critically important in terms of how we're addressing all students and how we get there.
And also, how do we compare to our surrounding districts? So we have the graduation rate and the graduation completion rate, which is what I think that the pilot covered in their article. And so you see an increase of eighty-one to eighty-five. And that four percentage points includes those students who received GED Certificate of Completion and completed the ISAP program. I know in prior years, we've gone over the different graduation measures. It will change again by the end of this school year, with the state coming up adding in a way to look at collaboration and communication as a part of graduates. And so this measure will change over time, but right now, we have three. We have the Virginia On-Time Graduation Completion Index, which is a part of our accreditation, which you hear about more often than not. And then the Federal Graduation Indicator, which usually is a year behind. I've updated this chart so that you can see what components are included into the different calculations. And you can see that for the Federal Graduation Indicator, it only looks at advanced and standard diplomas. For the Graduation Completion Index, it includes almost everything. And then the Virginia On-Time includes the diplomas, as well as the adjustments for transfer students and LEP students and SPED students. So they're given an allowance such that they, if they need one more year or two more years, then the cohort number is adjusted for that. This is just an illustration of all three measures. It's kind of hard to look at it across the board because the formulas are different. However, you'll see various rates when you look at accreditation and the federal accountability. And now I'll turn it over to John Coleman to briefly discuss some of our best practices and actions.
Good afternoon. So, there is no magic strategy that addresses all of our needs in terms of on-time graduation rate. You have a lot of different students with different needs, different areas of concern that we need to address. So you see a list here that's fairly comprehensive of a lot of the different strategies that we try to employ. Some serve just a few number of students, some serve a larger number of students. But we believe all of them have an impact in some way in terms of how we support our students towards the graduation path. You'll see on your first page, you know, that first bullet where it's encourage attendance and combat chronic absenteeism. That is one of the major areas that we struggle in, particularly in our alternative sites. And so when you look at our graduation, you know, numbers from our alternative sites, it's significantly lower than what it is in our schools. And that is, a big part of that is, you know, the absenteeism. That's usually one of the reasons why students drop out, is because they're not coming to school to begin with, they've disconnected. And so we've really got to address that area of concern with students. We have been working to increase parent engagement and student engagement with different strategies. Our work with focused schools is helping us with that student engagement in particular. We are addressing personalized learning going into this school year. We would like to expand the graduation coaches, but certainly, we see the value of having those graduation coaches, but they can't do it all for every student. And so they are some of the busiest people that you will find in one of, in our high schools. They have a lot of students to keep up with, and they start with that senior class, and then they work their way back. But really, when it comes to dropouts and staying, you know, keeping students on time, we know that it's those freshmen and sophomores that we really have to also pay attention to. So it's the graduation coaches, in conjunction with our school counselors, that make the difference there. Accelerated learning, which is some of the online learning opportunities we're looking at, expanded early childhood programs. And then if you turn the page, we have a variety of other programs that we implement and review. As you know, we've moved open campus from its previous site at Coronado to NTC, and we have made adjustments in the model there. We have the implementation, or the Twilight School is still in place at our high schools. Again, I mentioned the school counselors. We've made some changes as a division with our school counselors this year in that we have asked that the schools not have our counselors be testing coordinators or 504 chairs. And hopefully, that amount of time now can be utilized better to serving students, which would again, address graduation rates. And so we are implementing a number of different strategies, or adjusting strategies that hopefully will do this. We still have capturing kids' hearts as programs in our schools as well. I mentioned, you know, focused schools and working with our instructional leadership teams. You know, one of the areas that, you know, we talk about with our instructional leadership teams is focusing on those subgroups. And so within those instructional leadership teams, we know that certain subgroups, you know, do better than others, so how are we tackling it? Particularly, our special education subgroup is, got a major focus at the current time. We have our restructuring of existing resources, which I just mentioned. We still have our after-school, our summer school, our Saturday school, you know, programs. We continue to review the data, knowing that, you know, each cohort group is different than the next. The kids are different, the families are different. And so we have to be able to be flexible and adjust and understand, you know, what the differences are that are causing our rates to go up or to go down. And so data is always at the forefront as well. And then certainly, with our focus on literacy and reading on grade level is still a primary focus. We know that, you know, the better that students read, the more successful they're going to be academically. If we can keep them focused academically, we can keep them in school, and we can reduce the dropout rate, which will then come back and allow us to have an increase in our on-time graduation rate. Attendance is, again, you know, that last bullet there. And I simply want to emphasize the fact that, not only in the alternative settings, but even in our high schools across the board, attendance is an area that, for students, that needs to be a continued focus. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our successful graduation coach, Mr. Price here, where Maury did have an increase this last year. And Mr. Price is going to share some of the strategies that were used at Maury.
Good evening. At Maury High School, the principal took over doing scheduling conflicts, and she was actually responsible for the discipline for the entire cohort for the senior class. So she was directly involved with it, usually anytime she would have to address skipping classes or just making up things, and she would pull me in as well. So we both had the tag-team approach to being able to communicate with the students and with the parents as well. So that was very successful. The communication that we had with the outlying schools, like for the open campus or for the CSEP, some of the other alternative settings, it was difficult at first, but once we were able to open up the lines of communication with them, then it made it a little bit easier to track some of the students and try and keep up with, to keep up with them as much as we possibly could. During the summer, we actually utilized a remediation and testing session rather than waiting until we started the school year, trying to figure out, okay, what seniors still needed to make up SOLs to have. We ended up pulling from the eleventh grade year. So going into it, we brought some of the students in, we were able to remediate with them, test them. That way, when they started the school year, we were hoping they'd be a little bit ahead of the game. During the ILT meeting, the instructional leadership team were able to, like, I usually pick like ten to twenty of, you know, it's our seniors most wanted. It's the ones that we want to focus on for that particular month or that particular cycle that we're going through. And then all the different subject areas are able to focus, okay, so how could we help this student out? Or how could we do it for, to get them more on track? So it's not just, I don't, you know, throw all three hundred and fifty at her at once. We do it in a cycle, like a, we essentially focus on just a specific number of students. We do a lot of home visits with my attendance technician. Now, we lost the probationary liaison, so a lot of the attendance issues, we actually have to go to the houses, visit, put a lot of door knockers on. I go through a lot of business cards. But at least it shows that, you know what, if I skip school, someone's going to eventually come knock on my door and find out. And during the day, especially at eight o'clock in the morning, people don't like to be woken up, so the next day, they usually send their kid to school. So that definitely helps a lot. The implementation of doing Gradpoint for a credit recovery program, that was a huge success for us, just trying to get the students that may have been off-track, getting them back on track, that definitely helped out a lot. And then I think my most important contribution is we meet with every single freshman that comes to our school. We go through with two school counselors and myself. We go to every single ninth grade PE class. We sit with them, like, ten minutes, we go in, we give them a paperwork. It breaks down the different diploma types, it explains what it means to be graduating on time. It shows them how they become a tenth grader, what verified credits, that type of thing. And then we also mail that home. So at least they're getting it hit. As soon as they come to us from whatever middle school, they at least know, oh, okay, this is the expectation. And we outline the standard diploma and the advanced diploma, so they know, hey, there's an option. I throw out, if high school isn't for you, then, you know, before you drop out, we have to take that zero, come see me, we'll figure alternatives, possibly GED route. So that's, some of the things we've done that have been able to be successful.
Thank you, Wesley. And so this pretty much concludes our presentation. This particular chart, which is the information at a glance, should you not want to print the full presentation off.
I already can.
Questions?
Well, I just want to say, I want to thank again the high school principals, all of the graduation coaches, Mr. Coleman and the guidance counselors, all who have embraced the work of improving our graduation rates as, in a collaborative manner. It's not just about the coaches, it's not just about the principals or the guidance counselors. It really is about how do we all roll up our sleeves and identify students that need extra support and that extra oomph to make it over. The utilization and implementation of graduation coaches has been recognized nationally as a best practice. And so I was glad when I returned to know that we had coaches in place because we use them also in my former district. And they really do make a difference because there's that one-on-one, that personalized contact with students for success. With that, we certainly be glad to entertain any questions or...
Dr. Robinson?
What are the strategies to prevent truancy or to interdict with truancy? Because I, my office is in Ward's Corner, and every morning when I pull into my parking lot, there's a procession of school-aged children marching strategically away from Granby High School. And the other day, I asked them, I said, men, are you guys going the wrong way? And they said, no, sir, we're going the right ways. Okay. Then this is about seven-thirty.
Well, and you raise a really good point. We know one of our challenges has been, and something I, we talked with the state superintendent about the other day, and certain things, is that we, there are laws that are on our side as it relates to truancy. And we follow those protocols and make those referrals to the court. Those referrals aren't necessarily translated into an actionable support that will help the schools make sure a student is in school. Norfolk's numbers are up in terms of how we refer for truancy issues, but the outcomes in terms of some teeth that follow that referral is where we are missing. So that's one thing. The second challenge becomes, as, again, some positions that have been streamlined over time due to budget cuts, those are some of the pieces, as well as the probation liaison grant, with a grant with the city and the Department of Judicial Justice and others. I have been in conversation with the assistant director at the state level regarding those grants and seeing what's there, and they may be in the process of retooling how they approach that work also. So, you exactly right. Out, there was also one other program, I think the district used to have, and that was a truancy location that was at the Workforce Development Center, also near Ward's Corner in that area. That program went away, but again, the idea is that even if young people were picked up and taken there, not arrested, but taken there for family intervention, it didn't prevent it from happening again. So, the issue of attendance is very multifaceted, and you almost have to look at that individually as you do the grades and the number of credits and the system of supports that they need for success, because every child has a different story of why not school. So I mean, that's my commentary. I certainly, the team can...
That's right.
And I might just continue on with it. And I don't want to sound like I'm pushing back on you, Dr. Boone. What I want to know is, what are our current strategies? Those are all true, but gone away.
Utilization of the court system is one of the things. We also work directly with the families and the students, and that's what I say. You have to approach it on an individualized basis. What's preventing you from being in a regular attendance? You saw one of the actions up there, Mr. Coleman talked about, is where are places that we could perhaps increase early childhood education for children, students who are parents? Is the need for childcare a barrier to regular attendance? So that's why that was listed as an action. Because we hear that very often, that I don't have anybody to provide childcare, can't leave the child at home. I see the graduation coaches, I let you all, the voices from the field. I'm in the wilderness, you all go ahead.
No, they do speak of, my name is Jacqueline Ely, I'm the graduation coach at...
Go ahead and come up to one of the microphones, that way you can...
My name is Jacqueline Ely, I'm a graduation coach at Norview High School. And I have had students to say to me that I would come to school, but I don't have anyone to keep my young child.
Kim Singleton at Granby High School. In addition to the childcare aspect, some students are, some of our high school students are the primary caretaker of their younger siblings at the best of their parents, and they don't come to school because their mom says, well, no, you have to make sure your younger brother gets on the bus. And then now that student doesn't have a way to school. Also, the truancy laws for the Commonwealth, they do have restrictions. So, at a certain age, at sixteen, the truancy support that we have in place, they, their hands are kind of tied behind their backs. So the procession of high school students you see walking past your Ward's Corner, they know the rules. They know that after age sixteen, there's nothing that truancy can do to them.
Doesn't mean we stop.
No, we don't.
I see your body language, Dr. Robinson.
I haven't heard any strategies on how to overcome that.
So let me jump in here a little bit. You know, we do have some strategies.
Okay.
You know, we use the blackboard message system to send a notification home if a student has been absent. It doesn't necessarily tell them what class period they've been absent, but it does, you know, notify the parent. Unfortunately, many times, we find that either the phone number isn't accurate that we have in our system, so we're having trouble getting that message through. At other times, quite frankly, it's kind of what the graduation coaches say, the parent's priority for some of these other things is higher than their priority for their child to be, you know, their high school-aged child to be in school. And so we struggle with that some. We send letters home, you know, at certain points, you know, in their absentee, you know, list, as well as making personal phone calls to families, you know, trying to encourage, you know, to get that student in. So there's a number of different strategies that are utilized. You know, many of the schools now have a conductor system so that we're trying to keep, you know, school students in class and not walk in the halls as well, because we lose attendance simply because students not being in class. So there's a number of different strategies that the schools have employed. You know, I would say another, you know, issue that I see with attendance is we have a lot of students who can pass classes, but they go over on their number of days, and then we waive them because they've passed the class. And so we've kind of put ourselves into a system here, you know, where absenteeism has been able to get by because they've been able to come in with notes, sometimes even falsified notes. And, you know, we have to, you know, get into that detective mode as well. So attendance can be very complicated in terms of tracking it, addressing it, having parental support with it, and really, quite honestly, just working with the students to help them understand that the habit of good attendance is going to pay off for the habit of a job or their career down the line as well. And so, you know, those are some of the pieces that we look at.
I think also, a school resource officer bring them back to the school. That's another thing that happens too, they bring them back. And sometimes you're not able to detect if they've left home yet. Because when you, like, you stop and you see them, and they'll say, oh, I haven't even come to school yet. So when you see them at seven-thirty, they may not have even been in the building.
Almost certainly, they hadn't. I'm almost positive they got off the bus and started walking away. I see it when I go on my runs, I see it when, just because I live in that neighborhood. I heard about the McDonald's across the, across the street from Booker T. Washington as a great gathering place for students.
Dr. Robinson, are you okay if we move on to Reverend Haywood?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Ms. Wagner? Okay. All right, so we'll go with Ms. Wagner, Reverend Haywood, Ms. Bassin, and Ms. Doyle.
Well, I'm just thinking about budgeting and observation, and I keep piggybacking on something that you said in terms of, you know, it sounds like we're looking at twelfth graders, but it seems like that cohort of the ninth grade is really where we really need to put a major emphasis. Because if we can kind of get them there, mindset, because probably when they're coming from that middle school, you can almost target who is probably going to be a problem in terms of that whole piece. So that ninth grade cohort with the orientation and everything. So it just makes me go back to budget, thinking that, Dr. Boone, maybe that is something that we need to include in terms of graduation coaches, that we spend, maybe put more, or address more of that cohort and putting people there to make sure that we follow them from there.
Yeah, and true, we can put it in the budget. What's going to be funded is, as we saw this year when we tried to restore in-school suspension, because we talk about attendance, we fuel some of the attendance because if the only options we have are out-of-school suspension, then the child becomes absent. So our own policies, and that's not a negative against us. There are times when students have to be excluded from school attendance because of what they've done. And so, but we factor into that also. The, we also, and I met with the secondary principals earlier in the month, and one of the things that they were talking about is how they even back it up to middle schools, how middle and high schools talking, particularly making graduation the conversation beginning at least eighth grade, if not sooner. So that parents understand the significance of attendance, of the diploma types, and not wait until high school. Because truthfully, and you've heard me say this before, graduation is an indicator for high schools, but graduation begins in preschool.
Yes, it does.
And we really have to look at it across the spectrum, you know, from beginning through that terminal point. And there are some really critical places where that happens. We know that ninth grade is the bottleneck. We've often talked about overage for grade. Our current policies, and these are some things we're revisiting, create those bottlenecks at ninth and tenth grade, where students all of a sudden, they are ninth grade for two or three years, and all of a sudden, they become a senior because of some... because of some artificial things we have in place. Given the fact that the state is going to revise graduation requirements, is going to revise the accreditation pieces, then it's critically important for us to go back and revisit our own policies to see what do we need to put in place to help that. But the, the conversations as it relates to identifying truancy at elementary age is usually an adult issue. Elementary kids generally, I would say 98% of them have a desire to go to school.
Yes.
And it's something that the adults in their lives do to prevent their company. As they get older and those options for choices come into play, some students begin selecting out, some of that may have to do with academic performance. That's why the literacy piece is so critically important, because students who aren't reading on grade level or don't have enough literacy skill set to be successful in the academics will disengage because they aren't keeping up. And so all of those things are, are what we're looking at in terms of the connections between pre-K through 12th grade to get there. But very specifically, that ninth grade is a gatekeeper grade. We know years ago when Norfolk had a, a very intentional focus on this high school and, and graduation and recovery, we talked about what does the ninth grade look like? That's when we started the sixth grade transition programs, the ninth grade transition programs. And I agree wholeheartedly, how are we monitoring ninth graders to look at it? Many principals will pull quarterly, both the interim as well as the quarterly grades, what's happening with our ninth grade students, so we can intervene right at that point to help them get over that bar. Because if you can make it through ninth grade on time, the majority of students will graduate on time. The research is very clear about that. But when we bottleneck them, and as I said, there are some policy things that we're going to look at, and they're the lowercase Ps that we've put in place, those things that administration has put in place over time, that we have to revisit to see how we are contributing.
Okay. Reverend Haywood?
I will say this, I know that Hampton and Newport News, among the districts that have the higher graduation completion rates, they have two graduation coaches per high school, one that focuses on freshmen and sophomores and the other that focuses on juniors and seniors.
Thank you.
And I will say, last year I was at Booker T. Washington High School as a graduation coach, and I was able to target those ninth graders and speak with them individually. And, and many of them were able to make improvements, and I could see that from the GCI, from when I started to when I left, the, the projected amount that it was to be, it increased actually. So I knew, I know that, that those interventions, oh, the ninth grade level.
Thank you, Haywood.
Yes. So as I look at the statistics on on-time graduation, looks like the division has been making steady increase over the last four years, up to last year. And then we kind of fell off the cliff.
No, I won't say it's a cliff. Stay it back a little bit. Falling off a cliff would have put us more than four points, Reverend Haywood.
You're correct. Thank you for that correction. I'm sorry. But one thing is that, you know, when the, the vision presented the academic achievement, I could see that across the board we have improved. And, but, you know, at, at that presentation, I was looking at these graduation rates and I saw the difference there. But it seems to me that if we are making steady increase, and then last year we kind of made a slip. So I'm wondering, is, is there a change in how we rate, I mean, what, what, what change occurred? What, obviously you've been wondering the same thing. Do you have any theories to this?
Those are the conversations and, and the deep dives, and that's why we, we have the coaches here to help us think through this. We can't identify any single thing. No one took the foot off the pedal in terms of making it happen. The literacy work that we're doing, we will see that in time. So yes, we see it happen annually in SOL performance. But most 12th graders are not at a place where they are part of literacy. They are in, deep into their content and what that means. We've got to, we also had an associated uptick in our dropout rates this year too. So we've got to go back and look at who are the students who dropped out and what's the relationship to, to where we are. But like I said, those artificial, those policies, lowercase Ps that we've put in place that cause kids not to even see their own progression, it doesn't matter what their transcript is saying, but we've had them in a place such that they can't move out of ninth grade. So let me, let me be even more specific. Early on in the Virginia accreditation work and, and here in Norfolk, we often had to ask a question, what's in it for the kids in order to pass SOLs? Because they could, you know, frankly, a school accreditation is not about me, that's an adult issue. And so what's in it for me? But we also didn't want a lot of students getting to the 12th grade who had all of the, the traditional credits but didn't have any of the verified credits. So you, you had a bottleneck on both places. So we put in place a policy where you had to have a certain number of traditional credits and a certain number of verified credits in order to move on each year. It's that verified credit piece is where we're seeing some of the bottleneck, particularly in ninth and 10th grade, and students who carry that same designation every year. So when you fast forward to the social pieces that are going on, proms, other events, well, I'm not considered an 11th grader, even though I have the number of credits, I don't have the number of verified credits. So my peers are going on doing these things, and I'm in, in the hall of shame and can't do any of that. That's that balancing conversation we have to have between policies that were designed to make sure students were making progress toward graduation and now what is, is creating some bottlenecks. And so we have to look at that in relation to the revised graduation standards and things that are coming from the, the state board. And the state board is designated to do some of this voting in November. We'll have, have clearer indication of what that looks like. But we do know that we have these bottlenecks and, and we've got, that's something we own. We, we've got to help get over that bar.
One last comment. So with Maury, we see 83%. You know, Maury has been comfortable there for the last four years. And then they, they have jumped to an 86%. So any ideas as to how, you know, what happened there?
Well, you heard, that's exactly what Mr. Price described.
This is the reason why they bumped 3%.
He said that the principal took a cohort of the students and almost became another coach and another counselor.
And that's what...
To figure out, that's what worked for Maury. There were other strategies that worked at these other schools. It wasn't that they weren't effective, but there were some other factors that, that came in and, and caught us off guard.
Thank you.
Ms. Basine?
So I know we don't have a lot of time. I do have a lot of questions. I sent some of them to you in advance. But what, in particular, the gap between, among students with disabilities also was quite significant. I mean, maybe not statistically, but it looks, you know, significantly wide.
17%.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would say that was, that's a pretty big gap.
You mean compared to the state?
Compared to the state. What specifically, I mean, how does it look in other districts? And what specific strategies? And I believe, Mr. Coleman, you said that special education was a specific focus this year. But what particular, can you, can you speak to some of the specific strategies that are being used?
Well, we'll go back to the presentations we did with the elementary schools.
Okay.
And we said, making sure that students with disabilities have access to the core curriculum with the appropriate supports is what moves students closer to graduation. That, so there, there's nothing different that happens at the high school. Students have to be in the courses that lead to graduation. They have to have the accommodations and supports around those in order to move them to graduation successfully. One of, so it, it's no different for that. But in terms of the focus, I mean, again, as we've used the board's accountability plan as well as the work, the data that we look at, we've been very clear that we have to improve outcomes of our students with disabilities. You also heard that our special education teachers are part of the general ed content professional development. They are part of instructional leadership teams. We're being very intentional that special ed is not something that somebody else does. But special ed is part of the whole. One of the data points that, that for me is valuable, so it was 70 this year, what did it look like last year? Was it 66? Was it something else? And so that will be populated into the, the data dashboard and, and we will be able to, to, to look at those pieces. But, but in terms of, you know, and I, and, and I'm not being, trying to, to push back on the board, but I'm trying to keep the board focused on what we said, how we're approaching the instructional work. And it's the same, elementary, middle, and high, in order, in terms of how we address rigor, literacy, leadership, rigor, and innovation in the classrooms. It doesn't change by level.
Okay. And then if you could stay on that slide. So what's something I would like to see, especially among students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged, the different diploma types? Because I noticed, you know, we have around, and I'm thankful that you updated with this slide, you know, about, what was it, for with an advanced diploma? But I think somewhere, is it 37%, but with, with the IB, 40%. What are we, can, how do we increase that number of advanced diplomas? Because we know that that has been found in some previous research that it's correlated with enrollment in four-year colleges or two- or four-year colleges. So, and it's much lower than the state. So how do we, is that something that we can...
Well, it's, it's what we've talked about, how do we make sure that our students who are highly achieving students and gifted students are part of that 40%? Because sometimes they, we know socially, emotionally, they are not part of the advanced. The formula for advanced studies diploma is the number of courses that you take, the type of courses that you take and pass, and the number of verified credits that you have to achieve. Now, the state has, has offered various substitutes that would allow students then to get a verified credit, AP exams being one of those. So a score in a certain content area in an AP exam can be a substitute for an SOL test, which therefore counts as a verified credit, which moves it there. So making sure that our students are, are in those places and, and making that movement is critically important. I think one of the things that tends to happen with the on-time and the GCI and then the federal number is that what's the baseline becomes what we target. And it's the same conversation we've had about accreditation. 70% doesn't represent where we want to celebrate, it represents the floor. So the same mindset has to apply as it relates to graduation. Not only who's graduating, but what are you graduating with? And then how would that link to the post-secondary outcomes and the success? You know, in the slide that's in here, post-secondary outcomes are self-reported. You know, we, we haven't had the luxury of the, the resources to go back and see what's the, the variation between self-reporting and what becomes actual. There are some national databases that you can look at, students who enroll in state colleges and universities and what that looks like. But we don't have that same access for private colleges. They don't necessarily participate in that particular clearinghouse. If I may, I, I need to, we have about two minutes before we need to break. That clock is a couple of minutes fast, but we have two minutes.
I have a question for, for you, Dr. K, if that's...
Well, I think, yeah, so we're going to go to Ms. Doyle, and then we're going to, do you mind if we...
I just have a question for Dr., something about the special...
Courtney hadn't had her first name. Right, so we're going to go to Ms. Doyle.
So tonight, the factors such as the truancy law, the childcare issues, and having to take care of their younger siblings, those are factors that are not any different this year than they have been in the last several years. And those are the ones that are not in our control. We can influence them, certainly, and we would hope to have these children come to school early, but we can't necessarily force a parent to prioritize differently. We can encourage and so on, but a lot of that's not in our control. What's in our control is the prioritization of our policies. And, Dr. Boone, how quickly can we change the small P's of areas that are in our control that could impact starting even this year?
Well, we can't shift it this year, because again, what are we shifting to? We need to make one shift, and we need to do that shift in concert with the state's required changes, so that we aren't doing one thing this year and then jumping people again next year, so nobody's clear. We're working and monitoring very closely with what happens at the state. We certainly will have something in place for next, for the next school year. What we will do this year is identify those students who are on the cusp of not graduating and help, and continue to help shepherd them through this year as we build our new system based on what the state is saying a graduate will be required to have, and how many SOL tests, what that will look like. And so that's what we will parallel.
And then what can we do so that we could do some predictive modeling based on the student profiles we currently have to know what our rate's going to be this year and in the coming years, short of changing those small P's?
I'll look at Dr. Bailey on the predictive piece.
Certainly, we are monitoring the numbers. Every month, our coaches get a case load list, and they work from there. We can project out, but we'd have to look at the policies and if they are changed, would then what kind of impact would that have?
Since they won't change this year, though, we should be able to predict this year based on the student profile, right? So I think as a division, we should look at that to know if we're going to go higher than 81 or we're going to stay at 81 or go lower. So at least we have a scale, a scope and scale of what we're going.
We will have a full discussion to look at some things that, that we may can tweak within the year.
Okay.
And one of the things that I will do when we have our next agenda planning is map out when we can return to this discussion.
Okay, good, thank you.
That was a commitment.
I just have one question. Did the state change the criteria for, for VAP that may have been a factor in terms of graduating?
It was VGLA, not VAP, right?
Oh, was VGLA, oh, yeah, they reduced who could be, who qualified for VGLA.
Okay, and it wasn't people, the ones that qualified for VAP?
We, I would have to go back and look to see...
Because I was, was wondering, would that make a difference in terms of our special ed? Because... For, for board members around, Virginia grade level assessment is the VGLA, where you give an alternate assessment to the SOL for students with disabilities. The, the VAP, which is the Virginia Alternate Assessment Program, is a totally different assessment model. And that's usually done with our students who have the most severe cognitive delays. And again, you have to assess them in the four core content, but their model looks very different from what everybody...
Well, I was thinking that they've changed the criteria for that in some of those...
It was just the VGLA, okay.
We'll look at it, we'll look at it.
Also, they changed last year, what makes a difference with the special needs children is that they, they removed the modified diploma. Children with disabilities were able to get modified diplomas, and that went away. And so that also impacted the special education numbers.
Well, we're going to go ahead and wrap things up to transition over to the next portion of our meeting. But we greatly appreciate the voices from the field, our graduation coaches. And we celebrate the success at Maury and the successful things that you all have been doing at your schools to keep the children in school and to work towards their graduation. So we'll go ahead and end this portion of the meeting and then transition over to the formal session.